Seventeenth Planning Commission hearing to order. Heather, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 You have a quorum. So our first order of business is the approval of the minutes. I have shown staff a change of a date needed on one of them, but other than that, are there any other additions, corrections? Move that we approve them as presented except for that date correction?
Second. Aye.
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 There are no consent agenda items, so we'll start our public hearings. The first public hearing is PCR eighteen dash twenty-two, a request of Saint Bead's for a special use permit.
Good afternoon. Saint Bead's Catholic Church is proposing two accessible restroom additions, a seventy-one square foot addition on the Harrison Avenue Street facade, and a sixty-nine square foot addition on the Richmond Road facade. The church currently has no accessible restrooms. The current restrooms are located in the basement of the building and are only accessible from the exterior of the building down the stairs at the rear of the building. The applicant applied for and received a special exception from the BZA at their August seventh meeting to construct the additions within the existing setbacks of the church, and the applicant's statement was enclosed in your packages. The 2013 comprehensive plan designated this parcel as low-density detached single-family residential land use, which is defined in the plan as follows: a category that addresses the lowest intensity of residential development in large lot, single-family detached residential areas. The land to the north is designated low-density detached, single-family residential land use, and the properties to the south and west are designated William &amp; Mary land use. The property along with the properties to the north and east are designated as single-family dwelling district residential RS2, and the lands to the south and the west are designated as William &amp; Mary. The statement of intent for RS2 district says, "This district is established as a single-family residential area with low population density. The regulations for this district are designed to stabilize and protect the essential characteristics of the land and to promote and encourage suitable environment for family life. To these ends, development is limited to relatively low density and permitted uses are limited basically to providing homes for residents. Certain additional uses may be compatible with single-family residential neighborhoods, such as churches, schools, daycare centers, and may be allowed with the issuance of a special use permit." The applicant received conceptual approval of the two additions at the Architectural Review Board at their May twenty-second meeting. The Site Plan Review Committee met and reviewed this request on September nineteenth and recommended approval. There are no additional seats being added to the sanctuary, therefore no additional parking is required, and this property is adequately served with essential public services. This proposed project is in harmony with the adopted comprehensive plan and the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The proposed use is in harmony with the character of the adjacent properties and will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any feature determined to be of significant ecological, scenic, or historic importance. This project is designed and cited so it will not hinder or discourage appropriate development or use of adjacent properties in the surrounding neighborhoods. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend a city council approval of the special use permit for Saint Bead Catholic Church to construct two bathroom additions to the church as shown in the attached conceptual site plan containing two accessible restrooms at four-twenty Richmond Road. I'm available if you have any questions, and the applicant's representative are also present.
Questions? Okay, so then I will open the public hearing, and if the applicant wishes to come forward and say anything? Don't wish to, you don't have to.
I just wanted to make one statement, which is, I just wanted to thank the staff because they've been great. For such a tiny project, it's been so complicated for various reasons, but guiding us through what we need to do for zoning ordinance to satisfy it was really terrific.
Okay, so we have an open public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward to address the commission on this item? Seeing no one, excuse me, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion?
I think it's a good project, good idea. I move that we accept and recommend to City Council.
Second.
Yes, it makes it a much more welcoming place for you all to have this congregation. Erin? Heather, sorry?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so this moves to our second public hearing, which I assume will be taken as a pair, PCR eighteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four, requests for Colonial Williamsburg Foundation to amend the zoning ordinance and then for a special use permit.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Colonial Williamsburg Foundation is proposing to create an outdoor event venue at the Palace Farm site located at one hundred Visitor Center Drive. The site is over forty-two acres with approximately twenty-one acres currently developed. This is a two-part request, with the first part a proposal to amend the zoning text to require a special use permit for outdoor special events in the museum support district. The second part is a request for a special use permit to allow the outdoor special events at this location as shown on the screen. Types of venues proposed for this area include live concerts and festivals, live stage, theater, outdoor lecture series, outdoor movie nights, and pop-up food and beverage festivals. The temporary facilities proposed include a stage, grass seating area for up to five thousand attendees, portable restroom facilities, food and beverage tents, and food trucks at the zoning ordinance is amended to allow food trucks in other locations in the city. The size of the stage and fencing will vary depending on the venue, such as an example of the venue is the proposed Fun House Fest event currently held on the museum lawn. For certain events, outside food and non-alcoholic beverages are proposed within the venue. If alcoholic beverages are allowed, they will be restricted to those purchased onsite and inside the fenced area. Parking is available at the site and across the street at the Visitor Center. Access to the site from the Visitor Center is by the pedestrian bridge across Visitor Center Drive. The 2013 comp plan designates this parcel as Colonial Williamsburg Support, and it states that the Colonial Williamsport uses include a variety of commercial and industrial facilities that support the functioning of the Colonial Williamsburg Historic District. This property is owned Museum Support District, and the statement of intent for the district reads, "This district is established to uses that are related to and support the functioning of the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area. The most intensive uses may be allowed with special permits to ensure compatibility with the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area and surrounding residential neighborhoods. I included in your information the special use permit section and criteria for granting a special use permit." The Site Plan Review Committee reviewed the request at that September nineteenth meeting. They recommended approval and suggested that a condition that the special use permit be granted for two years to allow enough time for the applicant to have two seasons to determine if the concept is viable. The site, as I mentioned previously, currently contains a parking lot, the relocated windmill, and a closed interpretive site. The parking lot was constructed and used as an overflow lot for the Visitor Center and has been mainly vacant for years. The applicant has applied for a testament to add outdoor special events as a special use permit. They have also applied for a use permit to allow outdoor special events at the site. The proposal is to install temporary staging, portable restrooms, temporary food, beverage tents, and grass seating for up to five thousand to determine that the site and location is viable for these events. All temporary installations will be removed following each event. This property is currently underutilized, and the applicant is proposing to use a portion of the property for a variety of special events to attract more visitors to the city. They currently are asking for a special use permit for one year to determine if the space and location will support the new concept. If so, the applicant will return to ask for a special use permit for a longer period of time with more permanent structures. There is ample parking on the site and the Visitor Center across the street to accommodate parking for the venue. Those parking at the Visitor Center have a safe route to the site with the use of the pedestrian bridge across Visitor Center Drive. Therefore, staff supports the request to allow outdoor special events with a special use permit in the Museum Support District and recommends that Planning Commission recommend to City Council approval of the text change as outlined in the attached proposed ordinance. Staff also recommends approval of the special use permit request to allow outdoor special events at Visitor Center Drive, subject to the following conditions: because the proposal is in harmony with the comp plan, the intent and purpose of the Museum Support District, in harmony with adjacent properties, is served by public facilities, and will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of significant ecological or scenic or historic important features, and will not hinder or discourage appropriate development or uses of adjacent properties. The four conditions are outlined in your packet. The fire department must inspect and approve tent and stage installations. All tent stages and portable restroom facilities must be removed after Easter event. All amplified performances must cease by eleven p.m., and the permit shall expire on December the thirty-first, 2020, in accordance with the recommendation of the Site Plan Review Committee. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Jeff Duncan with the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation is also here if you have any questions of him.
So just to make sure we're all together on this, because I have gotten questions about, didn't we already do this with regard to the expansion of Summer Breeze and, you know, the Fun House Festival? That's the museum district, this is the museum support district.
No, the Fun House Fest in front of the museum is in the Colonial Williamsburg Historic District.
That's right.
The CW District.
Yes.
This is the museum support district.
Right.
So that's the difference between the two. That's correct.
Okay. And so are there other questions of Carolyn?
I did have one. So this morning, the Site Plan Review Committee talked about the perhaps change at the P3, the proposed new plaza going in there, and so I was curious if, I mean, movie nights was one of the things brought up when that was the specific idea that could go in at the plaza, or would there be any competition between these two?
I think they're just looking at the two spaces right now. I think the main event, and the applicant can probably address this better than I can, that this is probably a better location for the large events such as the Fun House Fest, and I think they're looking at doing some temporary theatrical and other types of events at this location.
There's only one entrance and exit for the parking lot?
That's correct. And that was widened, I believe, in nineteen ninety-nine to accommodate the changes to the parking lot that was done at that time. There's, I think, a little over four hundred spaces in that lot.
My only concern would have been the noise factor, but I see you taking care of that in the conditions.
And as you can see on the overhead, it's one of the few locations in the city that there's not a neighborhood right adjacent to the site, that there's a wooded area that separates it from Highland Park, and you've got the train tracks and the other wooded area on the other side, and of course you have the Visitor Center on the other side of Visitor Center Drive.
Use.
Okay, so there are no other questions. We'll open up the public hearing, and if the applicant representative wants to come forward first?
Just a quick comment. We're excited about the opportunities for this site and looking forward to being able to plan for some activities next summer. We're also very excited about what we've been able to do downtown, and there's no intention to move Summer Breeze or any of the other activities that we host downtown to this site, so this would all be incremental to what's already going on downtown. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No? Okay, great, thanks. So the public hearing is still open if anyone else would like to come forward and speak on this item. Not seeing anyone, I will close the public hearing and take comments or discussion?
I think it's a good use of this area. It says that it's underused, and it's a good use.
I agree. I think the change from the one year that was originally requested to two years gives them a good opportunity to assess the success.
And if it's a huge watershed year, you can always come back sooner if you wanted to do something more permanent, but it does give you that flexibility versus saying, "We tried one year, let's try it again," and we have to go through this whole process all over again.
And I think as long as they don't compete with each other, it works out to have a larger scale than a proposed smaller scale event space.
So I move that we, excuse me, I move that we recommend approval of PCR eighteen dash oh-two-three, the request of CW Foundation to amend the zoning ordinance to allow special events with a special use permit, and PCR eighteen dash oh-two-four, the request of Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for a special use permit to allow outdoor special events at one hundred Visitor Center Drive.
Second.
And that will include all of the appropriate additions that Carolyn has added to both of those?
Subject to the conditions recommended by staff.
Aye.
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 As an employee of the applicant, I abstain.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so this brings us to some housekeeping items here. Two public hearings in order. PCR eighteen, eighteen, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance, Article two, Division one, Section twenty-one, et cetera. Carolyn?
Yes. At its twenty-eighteen session, the Virginia General Assembly enacted House Bill seven-oh-nine, which allows the city to update the zoning ordinance to increase the maximum fine for misdemeanor convictions of the zoning violation from a thousand dollars to two thousand dollars. The bill also increases the maximum fine for failure to remove or abate zoning violations after conviction from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars for succeeding ten-day periods. Therefore, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend the City Council adoption of the proposed ordinance, which upstays the criminal penalty section of the zoning ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing if anyone wishes to come forward to speak. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. As I said at the beginning, this is our housekeeping to get our ordinances in line with the current state code, so. This forward, that'd be good.
I'll move that we recommend approval of PCR eighteen dash oh-one-eight.
Second. Heather?
Aye.
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 Okay, and back up for PCR eighteen dash zero-two-one, second ordinance. Carolyn?
Yes. At their twenty-eighteen session, the General Assembly enacted House Bill five-oh-eight that mandates amendments to the City of Williamsburg zoning ordinance regarding solar energy systems. The city has reviewed the bill and proposes the following ordinance amendments and update to our design review guidelines to meet the mandate. The text changes define a solar energy system and allows solar energy systems in the city meeting the criteria, the seven criterias outlined in my ordinance. The Architectural Review Board has amended their design review guidelines to address solar energy facilities. They held a public hearing on September the eleventh at their regular meeting, and the board recommends approval of the attached update to the design review guidelines to address solar energy systems. Therefore, staff recommends, Planning Commission recommends, City Council adoption of the proposed ordinances to add a solar energy system definition to Section twenty-one dash two, at Section twenty-one six twenty-five, two supplemental district regulations for solar energy systems, and updating the city's design review guidelines as they pertain to solar energy systems as required by House Bill five-oh-eight. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
This seems pretty straightforward. The one question I had just concerned height and under definitions, and the height of the solar energy system, this is four A, may extend up to five feet above the highest point of the roof of the building or structure on which it's installed. That seems quite high, so that's clearly meant to allow for some flexibility, but what are the circumstances?
Some flexibility in the way it's mounted and the pitch of the ruse.
Okay. Okay?
Understood that it can't be seen from the other side, though.
Uh, but if it's five feet above the roof, it'll be seen from everywhere.
Depends on the roof, and that's why it was put in that way. Architectural Review Board discussed it pretty thoroughly.
So if you had a very steep pitch, it could be five foot off and you could not see.
Oh, I thought it was five feet above the ridge of the roof.
No.
It's five feet above the plane of the roof. Okay, so it's a perpendicular back to the plane of the roof. Okay. I'll just say, to me, that wasn't clear in the draft. The draft of the ordinance, but now I understand. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Again, this is a public hearing. I open up the public hearing if anyone wishes to come forward and speak about the zoning ordinance change regarding solar energy systems. Not seeing anyone, I'll close the public hearing and... Comments or a motion to? Deaded through design review guidelines, so it seems like that's the real key.
Yeah.
And essentially, no, nothing allowed in AP one, which includes obviously the historic area of CW, AP two and AP three. It seemed like the regulations were essentially the same between AP two and AP three, is that correct? And there are even some significant limitations on what you can do in AP two and AP three. So this strikes me as...
Outside of that, it's pretty straightforward. Pretty wide open.
Yeah. Yep.
So a motion?
I move that we recommend PCR eighteen dash twenty-one, solar facility zoning, to City Council for approval.
Second. Aye.
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 Okay, going down our agenda, we have an exciting addition that we usually have, is that we have a new business, there's no open, oh, sorry, we need to have an open forum, sorry, I was so excited about our new business. We have an open forum, so after we've finished our public hearings, if anyone would like to come forward and speak to the commission on any item that may be in front of us now or in the future, this would be an opportunity to come forward. Not seeing anyone come forward. No site plans and subdivisions, no unfinished business, but we have new business, a food truck presentation. Ah, Andrew?
So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Today, we're hopefully going to write the end of this chapter of the food truck discussion. Notice I said "this" chapter because I'm expecting that the book's not closed yet. But we are going to walk you through what the work group that spent quite a bit of time working on food trucks accomplished. And so this presentation may be a little weird, because what I'm going to do is I'm going to attempt to take you through the steps that they went through before we get to their recommendations, so you can get an appreciation for everything that was considered. I normally don't like handouts, but I do have one that I'm going to give out to you in a little bit that just kind of summarizes where food truck regulations are in some of the cities across the country. So the food truck work group spent a lot of time on this primarily because of the amount of time between meetings. You know, we had a lot of time, it took us a lot of time to get things scheduled, and then it took us even longer to try and get the meeting accomplished. So we ended up, we started out with a mission of having no more than five meetings, planned on having four. We were able to get done what needed to be done in three meetings, which I was pretty pleased with. And the reason for that was because when we started this process, I really thought that there would be a lot of consternation at the meetings, difficulty in finding a consensus position, but right from the onset, it seemed like we were headed right to a consensus. So it ended up being much easier than I anticipated it to be. So as you can see here, the three meetings ended up shaking out, as the first meeting was kind of an introduction, let us tell you how food trucks work now, and then we moved right into defining what the problems were and trying to identify solutions. And then our third meeting was really just to capture what the solutions were that needed to be recommended forward to the Planning Commission and then ultimately the City Council. So the food truck work group consisted of a lot of folks that are considered to be stakeholders in this issue. We had some members from the advisory boards, we had the former vice mayor, of course, he was the vice mayor at the time, Scott Foster, who served as the chair of the group, and then the vice chair of the group was Adam Steely, who's the chairman of the EDA and also owns Blue Talon Bistro. We had a representative from Colonial Williamsburg, Mark Floromonte, we had a couple of restaurant owners in town, Brian Mahoney and Don Pratt, and then we had two food truck representatives, Tina Shadler, Phillips, and John Wade, and then a whole host of city staff that participated in the meetings as well. So this was the scope of the work group, and this is a result of, the work group was a result of a GIO from the current year of, or by annum for GIOs, which completes in January. So we're right on the cusp of getting this one done in time. But this is the scope. So review existing food truck policies and procedures for potential revision to provide a simple and conducive policy that enables food trucks and restaurants to meet the needs of the community while providing a competitive but fair entrepreneurial environment. So lofty goal, but I think in the end, the recommendations are exactly what that last bit says, competitive but fair. So looking at that introductory section of the work group's efforts, you can see here that we started out with where are they allowed now? And so there are two conditions under which food trucks are allowed. One is special event permits, but the caveat to that that most people don't understand, even in the food truck industry, is that I, the interim city manager, can only issue a special event permit for public property. So if it's on private property, I can't issue a special event permit for that. So a person that lives, just pick a neighborhood, and they want to have a wedding and have the food truck in the backyard, it's very difficult for us to find a vehicle and allow that to happen. So then, the next way that they are allowed is in the zoning section of the city code, there is one area of the city that's allowed to have food trucks, and there's a zoning process for getting a permit for it, and it is the B four district only. So anywhere in the B four, you can come in, you can go through the process, get permitted, and then operate your food truck there. We talked about hazards and the need for safety, and we watched some videos of food trucks exploding with no real predictive indicators there, just, you know, they're fueled by propane in most cases, and sometimes they're not safe. And so our fire department does an inspection every time the food truck operates, there's a whole checklist that they go through. One of the complaints that we have heard quite a bit about from the food truck community is how rigorous that inspection program is. In the food truck work group's effort, we talked extensively with the fire chief, who participated in the work group from the very beginning, about why it was onerous, and in his opinion, it's not. It typically takes about fifteen minutes to go through each one of those items on the list, and for a subsequent day of operation, they shorten that list down and just check what's necessary. But some of the issues that are brought up consistently are, if they were here yesterday, do they really need to see my driver's license again today? Do they need to check my inspection record again today? It's the same truck, it passed inspection yesterday, it surely will pass again today. And there's obviously some validity to those complaints that we can address as we move through this. So then, the meat of our discussion was really about best practices and how are other places doing this, because we're certainly not the first to the finish line on food truck policies. And there's no right-size-fits-all answer, is what we learned. So we started out with a whole host of national comparisons. You can see some of the ones that I pulled out here, Miami, Los Angeles, Portland, San Antonio, Nashville, big cities that are doing food trucks, some well, some not so well, all with different variations on policies and procedures. Some that let them happen without any restriction, and some that restrict them down to the very hour that they're there. We then moved to Virginia comparisons, and we looked at Charlottesville, Arlington, Fredericksburg, Roanoke, and Alexandria, and we just again compared what they're doing, and as you can see, there's quite a variation even within the state of how food trucks are being handled. From that, we moved to regional comparisons, so James City County, York County, Newport News, Norfolk, and Virginia Beach, and again, we found that everybody is kind of doing their own thing that is best fit for their community after what probably was an exhaustive process to determine the proper code and regulation. And so I'm just going to pause here for a second and hand out these.
Thank you.
Because I think it's important for me to tell you that the expectation of the Planning Commission is that today is your first presentation of what the work group produced in terms of recommendations, but ultimately, the expectation is that the Planning Commission will now take this and make it its own. So you will take the recommendations... So you will take the recommendations, review the information, and determine what you think is the best fit for Williamsburg, and make your recommendation on to the City Council. So I've passed out here just a handout that I pulled from Charlotte, Mecklenburg County in North Carolina, where they had done some pretty decent research on localities around the country and how they're handling food trucks. And the reason I handed it out is because there's a ton of information in there for every one of the cities that covers all of the topics that we're all asking questions about. And I want you to get a sense for, there's no right or wrong answer to how this is done. We can literally do it any way that you think is appropriate to the city of Williamsburg. And our situations are somewhat unique to others, of course, because of the players involved and the areas that we have interest. We are not these big cities on this list. One of the things that we thought was interesting from the work group was, early on, the two food truck operators said, "Look, there's no scenario where we're going to advocate that the rules change so that we can drive our truck down to Prince George Street on a Wednesday after, any given Wednesday afternoon, and open for business, because we're going to lose money every single time we do it. There's just not the demand in Williamsburg for that." Now, a special event with a threshold of people, yes, that's where it's interesting to us. Somebody wanting to have a special event on private property that has a whole host of people that can be our customers, that's interesting to us. That's where we want the regulations to be looked at. So again, we very quickly came to a consensus position because we deflated kind of the elephant in the room of, Williamsburg is not ready to allow food trucks on any street at any hour of any day without regulation. So we then moved on to stakeholder input, because we still felt like there were people in the community that wanted to say their piece, particularly to the work group, and so we offered them that venue. We had them, at one of our meetings, I believe it was the second meeting, we allowed Mr. Kennedy to come in, who runs Fooditude, as well as Billy and Sharon Scruggs at Own Retros. And so hopefully, you know enough about the food truck issue in Williamsburg to know that these represent kind of the opposite sides of the argument, right? We want to have very open regulations so that I can operate my food truck with very minimal oversight, to, we need to restrict it as much as possible. But again, even in their comments to the food truck work group, there was a lot of commonality in position. You know, Mr. Kennedy made it clear, he's not going to come in on any given Wednesday. So again, we heard the same message. So it's pretty easy to move forward from that to the major issues at hand, and they are zoning district. Where should we allow an expanded food truck presence? Should there be a buffer between a food truck and a bricks and mortar restaurant provider? And should there be a buffer between a food truck operator and a residential unit? And so those were where we spent the majority of our time. Again, as I said, we had a consensus position very quickly. We said that the existing public process is working, so that's the special event process that runs through the city manager's office. You know, that, it's cumbersome, but for the most part, when somebody calls us with a unique case of, "We want to have a food truck at this thing," we are able to solve that problem one way or another. And so far, it's working. I would feel better if there was more criteria as to what I'm looking for when I'm reviewing an application for approval, and I think that we could spend some time talking about what criteria might be applicable. I think it's difficult, though, because, you know, on the Jim Kennedy, Fooditude side, you want that to be as flexible as you can be, but at the same time, as the person signing the permit, I want the protection of, I followed the letter of the law. And I guess I have a little bit of planner in me still that wants that section of code to turn to and read the rules. Then we talked about the zoning, and we said LB1, B1, B3, ED1 and ED2, I'm going to show you that in greater detail. We said that there needed to be a restaurant buffer, but that it needed to be permissive, meaning that if we had a restaurant buffer and there was an event, and I wanted to have a food truck inside the buffer, I could still do that if I get the permission of some percentage of bricks and mortar restaurant owners inside the buffer that I'm going to be inside. So that made sense to us. We said that we needed to remove the residential buffering, because we just didn't see an application where that would really be a problem. We said that we needed to find a way to allow private property special events with food truck service, and that we wanted to limit that to so many times per year or some function thereof. We said that we still need that fire department inspection prior to business, and we want you to have a business license, and that that inspection by the fire department has to happen on each operational day, because the fire chief remains concerned that anything could have happened to that equipment overnight, including vandalism, and that we want to make sure that before you fire up the grill or the hood, that it's operating the way that it should. So, the work group felt like these six positions were equally supported. So this is the zoning discussion at a glance. As you can see here, the ED2, the B3, B1, LB1 and the ED districts are highlighted. So those would be the areas of expansion. What's not shown is the existing allowance for Capital Landing Road. So it'd be in addition to that, and the theory being that we would add to the zoning districts the provision for food trucks, and that they would follow the same kind of zoning procedure that's outlined for Capital Landing Road. So that process is already there, all we'll be doing is adding that use as an allowed use in the district. So then we moved on to talk about the restaurant buffering, and this map shows you, we went through a bunch of iterations, looking at impact, what does the buffer really mean? And so you can see here, 500 feet, pretty much can't have it anywhere. 300 feet, you still can't have it anywhere. And then 100 feet, it starts to look a little more reasonable. Now, here is the question with the restaurant buffer. Where do you draw the buffer from? A center point in the restaurant or the edge of the structure, right? So what's shown in these maps is a center point of the restaurant. As you'll see, as we move through our conversation, that theory changed. So we went back to our comparisons and just pulled out how they handled restaurant buffering. And as you can see here on the national charts, three of the cities that were looked at had a buffer. In Portland, it was 100 feet, in San Antonio, it's 300 feet, in Nashville, it's 150 feet. So again, there's no right or wrong answer to this, it's purely what the community feels is appropriate. Looking at the state level, only one locality had a restaurant buffer. It somewhat surprised me that it was Charlottesville, and they said, "No cells within 30 feet of a restaurant during operating hours." 30 feet, it's a little lost on me as to how that really accomplishes anything, but I'm sure there's a reason that that ended up in their ordinance. But none of the other jurisdictions that we looked at in the state had those restrictions. And then regionally, there are no restaurant buffering as well. So it's kind of an interesting discussion. Now, we'll pause here and tell you a little story, just from my history. When I worked in Bristol, one of the things that I had to do was write a food truck ordinance for the Planning Commission, and I was the planning director there, as well as the assistant city manager. And so I was also the economic development director, so it was an interesting, one-stop shop for everybody. People would come and talk to me about an economic development prospect and say, "Huh? No, how's the Planning Commission going to feel about this?" I'd say, "It's fine. It's going to be fine." But, so I wrote the food truck ordinance, and as I sat there and did my research, I wrote it with a restaurant buffer of 100 feet from the front door, right? That's how I wrote it. And I was proud, I thought, "Oh, okay, I've made it right down the middle, this is going to be perfect, everybody's going to love it." I presented it the first time at the Planning Commission, and the restaurateurs had filled the room. And I thought, "Well, I didn't do so well. We'll see how it goes." The first person gets up and speaks, it's a barbecue restaurant, and he said, "Look, this ordinance is fine, but take the buffer out. We do not want a buffer at all, because we want the food truck owners to have to compete with us where we are. If you've got a buffer, it pushes them to where we aren't and where we cannot be, and so we can't compete, and that's not fair." And I just wasn't prepared for that. So ultimately, our food truck ordinance passed without the buffer for that reason. So it was kind of an interesting lesson to me that even what I thought was the case wasn't true. So then, we moved on and started looking at how the buffers could be brought into a reasonable size. So now you can see, we've gone from 200 to 150 and 100, but you can also see that we started drawing the boundary from the edge of the structure. So that equates for why the balloons look different now. So 200 feet, still looks a little too much, 100 feet, still looks a little too much, I mean, 150 feet, and then 100 feet, maybe that's reasonable. And so this is kind of where we landed. These are the other areas that we looked at, just to see how they impacted. So we looked at Midtown, we looked at the Zable Stadium area, we looked at High Street. And the reason that we looked at those is because we considered those to be the drivers of the food truck demand. If there was an area where a food truck would be wanted in Williamsburg, these were those areas, probably during special event days. So we then talked about applications, and the fact that there are two different applications to get to where you want to go for the same use, right? There's the zoning process, which is the one on the right, and then there's the special event process, which is the one on the left. So this zoning, the special event process goes through the city manager's office, and the zoning permit goes through the planning department. So this is how that workflow shakes out in terms of the special event being permitted. It's submitted, it's reviewed, we send it out to all of the departments for comments, and then it's approved, and the permit is issued. So, pretty straightforward process, we can do it relatively quickly. We do have deadlines for submission, of course, but we frequently make exceptions for things that weren't considered, particularly if it was an application that was already submitted for a special event, and then they decide they need to add to it something, whether it's a food truck, or another street closure, or a barrier, or some addition, we try to accommodate the request if possible. So the zoning process works very similarly. It's submitted, it's reviewed, then there's the comment period, and then it goes through the approval, and then ultimately, it gets issued. So, again, very straightforward kind of process. There's a whole list of criteria in the zoning section for what you have to submit with your food truck application that you don't have with the special event process. So there may be some equity issues that we need to look at there as we apply this more broadly. So then we talked about, now that we know that there's two application processes, and clearly, it is a process involving a lot of people and a lot of staff time, should we be charging for the application? And right now, there's no fee for either application, and so we just looked at those same cities across the board, national, Virginia, and then regionally, what their fees were. And you can see there that they have varying fees for varying uses, some of them are high, some of them are low. And so all that really told us was, it's acceptable to charge a fee. And so we had a conversation at the food truck work group level about, you know, do you want to recap, recoup 100% of the cost, which would make it unaffordable, or is it okay to recoup at least just some of it so that the applications are meaningful? And ultimately, that's what was decided. So then we moved on to defining the use, because what is a food truck? You know, we get in the habit, particularly in Williamsburg, of calling it a food truck, food truck ordinance, food truck issue, but really, most places have gone to calling them mobile food vendors, because as you've seen, you know, if you really saw one of our presentations of food truck work group, these little pictures in the corner, I tried to find the best pictures of food trucks I could. I particularly liked the burrito snowmobile as an example. There's another one that was like a floating taco truck in, I think it was in Amsterdam, it was like a water taxi that was also a taco truck. So, you know, they can really take any kind of shape, form, and they already do in Williamsburg too. You know, they're not just food trucks, which everybody thinks of like a panel van that's been outfitted with a commercial kitchen. Even in Williamsburg, there are food carts that are already here, that are being used for special events. So we need to make sure that our use as the definition covers everything that we might expect to see, and we won't get it 100% right, but we've got to try. So we ended up with this large wheeled vehicle from which food is sold, that typically contains cooking facilities where the food is prepared. What's missing there, you'll note, is we took motorized out of it, because they're not all motorized. Some of them are trailers that are pulled behind and left for an event, so just trying to be as all-encompassing as we can. So finally, after that exhaustive explanation, we are to the group recommendations. So the first is, as I said, the existing public policy, or public property special event process is working, but we need criteria for approval. One of the discussions that was had was, should there be an attendance threshold for the event for food trucks to be considered? And we don't have an answer to that, that's just, that's a food-for-thought item. You know, the purview of the Planning Commission is the zoning ordinance, not necessarily the rest of the city code, but that's something I would love your input on, is what do you think about an attendance threshold for allowing food trucks to operate? I kind of like the idea, I just have a really hard time with how we would pick that number and not be kind of arbitrary in the decision-making. Because when you ask the question, and we did, of the food truck work group, particularly the restaurateurs, what's the capacity of service in downtown, the answer was all over the map. You know, each one of them had a different opinion as to how many people could be served comfortably for an event. So, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the answer. It may be that we should leave it the way that it is and just have that ultimate flexibility. Probably, the community knows best when food trucks should be allowed, and the city manager should be able to determine that. Expand the zoning allowances to include LB1, B1, B3, ED1 and ED2, as I said, using the existing zoning process. On the restaurant buffer issue, we landed on 100 feet. So I'm happy if, when we get through this, to pull up that map so you can see what that means again. This is probably the most important issue that you're going to debate in terms of this ordinance. I think as this moves forward, you will have members in the audience, either at the Planning Commission where you're adopting it, or at the City Council meeting where it's being considered, who are going to talk passionately about either dropping that 100-foot buffer or making it bigger. Because it really is just dependent upon your opinion of food trucks and how they relate to the existing service of a restaurant, as to how you feel about it. Even the restaurateurs had mixed opinions, but ultimately, the food truck work group recommended 100 feet. It is permissive, they landed on 75% in order to get the go-ahead, that's a pretty high bar, so I don't know how many times that could be applied, but it at least gives the opportunity. Removing the residential buffering, as I said, the existing code has a residential buffer, I've forgotten what it is, but it's in there, and we just don't feel like it's really necessary, so we take that out. Allowing private property food trucks using the zoning process, not the special event process, and having that be limited to, I think we talked about twice a year, that way you would be able to do it for your fundraiser or your wedding, but, you know, you're not going to be able to have that cornhole party every Thursday night. If you want to do that, you need to open a business in a business district. And then, number six, the fire department inspection is required prior to business license being issued, and on each operational day. That way, we can be sure that they're safe and that they're paying the proper taxes to the city. We landed on a $50 application fee. Obviously, that's very inadequate if the goal is recouping 100% of our costs and issuing the permit, but at least gets us on the map in terms of having the application be meaningful. And then, number eight is, we need to define food truck, and we want that to include trailers, and it should not be limited to motorized, there should be a D on that, vehicles, because they can really cover a lot of ground in terms of what those look like. So where do we go from here? This shows you where we've been and where we're going, very slowly with the animation, but intro meeting, the draft meeting and the confirm, confirmation and support meetings of the work group, to today, where we are, October, presenting to the Planning Commission at least the first time, so that you can start thinking about this. The staff has not drafted an ordinance, obviously, it's not before you today, because we want your input before we do that. If the food truck work group did not hit the mark, this is your opportunity to say that. You know, if you don't want the buffer, if you don't think we should charge an application fee, this is your opportunity to weigh in, so that when we come back to you, I believe the plan is in November, with an ordinance, it reflects what the Planning Commission vision might be, working now off the base work of the food truck work group. That's how this is all supposed to operate. So don't feel like you can't change these recommendations or dig into the issues deeper, you certainly can. And if you need to take more time than just November, that's okay too. There's no gigantic rush for this to get done. I think the food truck community would like for us to get it done before the next big season, which of course is going to be the spring, but, you know, we were trying to hit the GIO target of getting it to the City Council quickly. Again, there's no magic to that. And then the City Council has to do the same thing that you're doing. So as you go through this, if you pass it on with the 100-foot buffer, it's entirely possible that the City Council, taking public comment, will decide not to have that buffer. It's just impossible to predict. And with that, I'll answer any questions. As will Carolyn.
Well, thank you, first off. That was a great presentation.
Sure.
Got a couple. How many food truck or mobile vendors are there in the area that would serve, really have a good idea of how many there are?
Yeah, and I don't think there's an answer to that. You know, it depends upon how far out you go. We get requests from food trucks that operate frequently in Virginia Beach or even in Suffolk. There is a group of food trucks that's somewhat united in the south side that are pushing onto this part of the... onto this part of the peninsula, particularly in Newport News and Hampton. They're not really onto Williamsburg, because we just don't have the demand. You know, if you think about Newport News and Hampton, they've got major employers that at lunchtime, a food truck probably could do quite well. Williamsburg just doesn't have that mass. But that group is organized to try and get regulations changed in all of the cities, so that it's very easy for them to navigate. And so, I think that you could include their roster of members in the group that would be interested in participating here on special event days. I would say our core group is probably no more than seven, in terms of actual vendors that we deal with frequently.
And with a business license, they collect taxes?
Yes. That's right. The business license is the trigger for them to submit their sales and food tax.
So, the methodology of the 100-foot buffer makes sense to me, but I was curious where the 75% permissive rate comes from? Is that comparable towards cities close to us?
Yeah, we looked at, in cities that have a permissive ordinance, a lot of places use 80%. We didn't find a whole lot that went less than 50%, and so, the food truck work group was comfortable with 75. As I said, that's a pretty high bar, but still leaves an opportunity for that one owner that just doesn't like food trucks at all to say no. So, is that fair? Probably, if you like the concept of the buffer, the permissive style is the best way to go.
Got a couple of questions, if I may. I apologize for getting here late. The business license, so if someone wanted to have a truck come to their specific wedding, or a private event, then that's a flat fee that they're getting paid.
Right.
And then if they were selling items at a public event, then that's a...
Totally different arrangement.
Totally different arrangement. Would they be taxed on only their sales within the city on those events? And how does that really track?
Well, that actually makes it very complicated, because in the scenario where I am, you know, let's say I'm renewing my vows with Ally, and I want to have the Snow-to-go truck there to serve my attendees, right? And I'm going to pay Snow-to-go a flat fee, because I don't want you, who attended my renewal ceremony, to have to buy the snow cone. That's catering, right? Totally different thing. But, and the state code has very odd, I think that's fair, regulation for how that caterer has to be licensed, depending upon where their commissary is, or original place of business, and do they have a license there? Where are they paying the fee? Do I pay it before they come? Are they getting a check at my house? All of that gets considered. I'm not too far off base, right, Michelle? So, it's very complex. So, that's the business license side of it. On the city's zoning application side of it, I would have to look to Carolyn, but it's, the question is, if Snow-to-go comes to my house, and I'm paying them a flat fee, but they are serving the snow cones out of that truck, is it a food truck, and then not allowed in the zoning district? And I think historically, our answer has been, yes, it's not allowed in the district. I have been party to conversations where the former city manager would say things like, "Well, if they prepare the food in the truck, but then serve it from a table outside the truck, it's catering, and we would allow it." I mean, it's just, it's a lot of nuance, but it comes down to how the code is written currently. Am I off-base in that?
Okay.
So, I think it's a simple change to fix that one complaint of not being able to have a food truck at my private event. I don't think it's hard to get there, but we want to be real careful about the unintended consequences of that.
The 75% permissive concept, is that those businesses, since we're talking about, it can't be within 100 feet of a business, then who is it who has to give the 75, what 75% has to give the permission?
Get back to that map. So, the, I think your question is, do all businesses, or just the restaurants? Is that the question?
Well, if you can't have it within 70, within 100 feet of a business, of the restaurant, then who is it that you have to get the permission from?
It's the restaurateur.
The ones that are beyond 75?
No, inside the buffer. It would be, right. So, if you, if you look at the map here, and I'm sorry, it's so small, we wanted to be able to show them all, but there's a, I don't know, on here somewhere, I think.
So, I think, I think, Andrew, this is how we're supposed to see this. If you had something on Prince George...
Right there.
And it, the 100-foot buffer encapsulated five or six restaurants. It's not going to include all of the ones that are, includes five or six. You need to get 75% of those.
Of five or six.
Okay, so it's an exception to the buffer?
Yes. That's what it is. Right. It's an exception to the buffer. So, let's say that, just picking an example, the Scruggs' swing dance that they do every year, let's say that, for some reason, I can't imagine he would, but let's say he did decide he wanted to allow a food truck to come, then he would have to get permission from those three restaurants there, or 75% of those three restaurants, to allow that to happen.
But if they wanted to have a food truck on the steps of the Wren Chapel, then they would need to have permission at all from the restaurants, because they're outside...
They're outside the buffer. Now, I get your point. Outside the buffer, no permission required, but you would have to have the zoning permit, and inside the college, of course, all bets are off, because they're exempt.
So, on that street, when you're within, let's say, three businesses, if you're within that 100-foot buffer, if two say yes, but there is that sort of one holdout that doesn't like it, then it doesn't work, and they can always hold out. So, did the working group consider that at all? And is that purposeful, that it was at 75%? Because it seems as if, then, if there is that one holdout, they would never be allowed.
The group did discuss it, but not at length. So, you know, I think that that, there's no magic to 75%. It's just where the group landed.
And in that area, it seems like if you moved the truck 20 feet, you might be able to get four, and thus maybe get three out of four, you know? So, I don't know whether we're getting this deep into it at this point, but it's like, when we're talking about the private events, there are lots of areas of the city that are not in those areas that you listed off, where I know neighborhoods have a community park, and you might want to have your, you know, Labor Day party, have a food truck at it, or something like that. So, with the private section, is that across the city, or is it only in those districts as well?
No, the conversation that we had was, the recommendation would be that for the private events, two a year, anywhere. And it would just be this broader allowance with the zoning amendment, or the zoning permit, in those particular zoning districts.
So, just so I'm clear, so two events per entity, or two events across the city?
Two events per entity.
Okay. So, it's not as though if Indian Springs and Burns Lane each have an event, the rest of the city is...
Is done, no. It would be sort of fun to administer, but no.
And so, we're actually talking about the property in question having the food truck.
Right. Exactly. So, the application would be, like any zoning application, it'd be the owner or the owner's agent making the application.
My other question was, given that we've just had today a presentation about a new venue, or proposed new venue, which explicitly said, "They'd like to, for example, have a food truck event," whether there was a food truck there to serve attendees, or it was all about the food. Museum support was not among the listed districts. So, could you discuss that?
I can. You know, at the time that we were working on this, that plan was not publicly known. Even the food truck, I didn't know, the food truck work group didn't know. But we did talk a lot about downtown, and the areas of downtown that are not in the LB1. And the reason is that we ultimately decided to exclude that, was because of the proximity of public streets on which to use the special event process, which is working. Right? So, the only, the net effect of not having those districts be in an allowance, is that the special event permit process would only allow them on the public street, which meant you couldn't have it in the backyard of one of the historic buildings. A good example that we actually talked about is the donor house. You know, they have those events in the backyard of the donor house, would not be allowed to have a food truck back there, but they could have it on the street in front. And ultimately, the work group felt like that was sufficient.
But that's the museum or CW district, as opposed to the museum support district, which is the visitor's center, this parking lot, the sort of area behind Great Hopes, which is what the application was about today.
It goes beyond that, doesn't it, Carolyn? There are other areas of museum support downtown. So, I think you should have that conversation, and decide how to handle it, but I think that you really need to look hard at what would be the application, not just to that one property, but to the whole district.
Sure. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, and just so it's clear, I'm not advocating food trucks at the With House or anything.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that, I think the only way that the Collins-Williamsburg proposal really works for special events, is if they're allowed to have food trucks, because there's no support services there. We actually went out, some staff and I went out and looked at the site a few days ago, just to make sure we understood it, because the lack of services is something I think they're going to have to work hard to overcome.
Yeah, it's remote, but I think that's also why it's appealing.
Sure. Sure. I think it's a good site, but there's going to have to be some work done to make it something that really is enjoyable.
Okay, so, also...
No, just to ask if this is available? PowerPoint?
It's available online, through your packet.
Thank you.
It wasn't on our packets.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
So, so, what are our next steps on this? I mean, we're hearing this right now. If we, if you want to have it potentially part of the 2018 GIO checklist, that goes, I mean, City Council in December, which means us in November. It's not currently on our public hearings for next month. What's, I mean, I don't know, it's maybe it's not, maybe it's, Carolyn, you know, what's the work agenda for us to resolve this?
I would suggest us draft an ordinance, and possibly bring it to you next month, to schedule for a public hearing in December. And then that way...
Okay, so then we won't make the December cutoff?
Right.
Okay.
But I don't think that's the end of the world, if that, and then council will get it in January.
No, we would much rather you get it right, than get it quick.
Yeah, that seems much more reasonable. I just didn't see how we could get it on our actual public hearing agenda in November. But I did, I mean, I think this is a great work. I think it's really close. I mean, I think that, I don't have a quarrel with any of the recommendations. I mean, I do think that there should be a fee charged when you were going through your presentation, on like, does the cost cover the fire department daily visits? Clearly not, but having some charge, you know, having there be some weight to that proposal, I think is totally a reasonable thing. So, yeah, I think, I mean, are there other questions? Giving, you know, can you give Carolyn other comments to tweak things, to propose ordinance? But we'll...
Just going to say thank you. I mean, I think the research was done really well, especially with the buffer zones, and what sort of comparable areas they're doing. So, thank you to you and the working group.
Great, thank you. So, I would just ask you to cogitate on particularly this slide, because this is the one that has the most impact. And think about the buffer, and whether or not it makes sense to you, and talk to your friends, talk to your restaurant operators, and your food truck operators that you know, and get their input as well, because in the end, we want something that's going to work.
You know, you bring up a good point about the fire department coming out. This is, the application fee would be a zoning fee. Does the fire department have the ability to charge a fee for coming out and doing inspection for multiple days?
They could. They're not proposing to do that now. You know, the way that the city's budget operates is both those departments are funded out of the general fund, so if the zoning fee is paid to the planning department, then it goes, that revenue ends up in the same fund that provides funding for the fire department.
Okay, well, thank you. I was wondering why you were in our meeting today. I didn't know there was anything. So, you know, interesting that was going to require a couple of hours of your time, but thanks for coming, and then thank you for the presentation.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so, back to our agenda. There's no others. Maybe here we have our information items, as we always do. As we already were referencing, we have four public hearings already scheduled for our November meeting, November 14th. But before we get to that, next week, as we are in the session right now of having